Everyone, welcome to the Planning Commission Study Session on the City's Parking Policy. My name is Ed Schreiner. I'm the Climate Smart Planner and one of the project leads for the city's parking reform effort. So just want to give you, the Commission, a quick background on Climate Smart San Jose. I think some of you may have more familiarity with it than other. Basically, Climate Smart San Jose was adopted in February of 2018 as the city's greenhouse gas reduction policy driver. And it's basically the city's effort to maintain compliance with the Paris Climate Accords of 2016, which both the city of San Jose and state of California had committed to agreeing to even if the US withdrew from it. Let's go ahead and go to the next slide. I'm just trying to keep this really short because no one's here to listen to me talk. So basically, as we adopted Climate Smart towards the end of 2018, the city was able to get some grant money from Bloomberg Philanthropies as part of the American Cities Climate Challenge. This was a nationwide effort that include 25 or well, 24 other cities throughout the US to achieve goals related to greenhouse gas reductions. Kind of a four-pronged approach that San Jose agreed to was reducing building energy use, increasing renewable energy, reducing vehicle travel, and electrifying vehicles. So the main focus of the parking effort relates to the reduction of vehicles' travel. And so through this funding, this allowed the city to partner with the Urban Land Institute. And I will now turn that meeting over to them for the rest of the study session. Thank you.
Thanks, Ed. My name is Rick Dishnikah. I'm the Chair of this panel. Madam Chair, members of the Commission, members of staff, and the public, and we thank you for the opportunity to make this presentation. A little bit about the Urban Land Institute. Our mission is to provide leadership in the responsible use of land and in creating and sustaining thriving communities worldwide. We're an organization that was started in 1936. We have over 40,000 members around the globe. 2,300 of them are here in the Bay Area. We do a lot of things in the area of real estate development and land use planning and financial disciplines. In San Francisco, we provide a forum for sharing of best practices. We also create opportunities for young professionals to develop their skills and build relationships. We organize and conduct meetings. We direct outreach programs, administer the urban plan program, and conduct technical assistance panels, of which this is one. What is a technical assistance panel? It's based upon the Advisory Services Panel Program that was started in 1947. And in the Bay Area, we've done over 34 of these since 2006. We provide independent, objective, candid advice on important land use and real estate issues. So what's the process? We review background materials provided by the staff. We receive a sponsor presentation and a tour. We conduct stakeholder interviews. We consider the data, frame the issues, and write recommendations. We make a presentation, and we ultimately produce a final report, which you'll probably see within the next several months. Here we are. Why is this important? Why focus on parking in a climate challenge program? Well, here are the parking challenges and opportunities. You've seen these around the city. Parking takes up a lot of space. You can see the metrics: from a dining room table to a home office to a parking stall. Parking is about balancing access and directly shapes demand. What is our assignment? How should the city's zoning code be modernized and enhanced to achieve its goals? What are the on-the-ground impacts of these changes? The city of San Jose would like to reduce parking costs to developers, especially for affordable housing, and seeks to understand how this might impact the financing of development projects. The parking's terrible, so we decided never do anything again. What we saw and heard: we got a site tour, and we had stakeholder interviews. Ed was kind enough to take us around on a small bus. We drove out east Santa Clara to Alum Rock to McKee, came around back on Julian, and ended up back at City Hall. We heard from the members of the community. These are the stakeholder groups: local businesses, public and quasi-public agencies, developers, and local advocates and NGOs. And we thank them, I hope some of them in the audience, very much for taking the time out of their day to come and chat with us. We heard from city staff: planning, building, and code enforcement, economic development, Environmental Development Services Department, and Department of Transportation. So we were asked to do parking, but there's a lot of other things that are on this list. This was a big assignment, a little bit more than we normally anticipate. So we have some big ideas. One of them is "one size does not fit all," flexibility, and adaptability. So our presentation outline is we talk about the concept of just-right parking, large-scale TOD development, and, excuse me, large-scale, and we're using the example of TOD development, neighborhood scale, and we're using the example of a commercial strip. And with that, I'd like to talk to Darren. Turn it over to Brad, who will take on the next piece.
Thanks, Rick. So Darren and I are going to kind of pass the mic back and forth a little bit as we talk about our ideas around parking policy reform. And kind of the overarching concept is this: it's just-right parking. And so what that's about, it's not, it doesn't have to do with being anti-parking or pro-parking. It's really about finding balance. And, you know, what we saw in the city is evidence that minimum parking requirements don't always work. There's areas that we saw that are underserved, and there's areas that are overparked. And one of the reasons for that is that parking demand is a dynamic thing, whereas code is a static thing, and so there's a balance that needs to be found there. Parking demand is dynamic in terms of time, so just on a daily basis, there's fluctuations on need. And then in the long term, we're seeing, you know, generational change in terms of the importance of car ownership, which you can see in that chart on the right. And we're also seeing innovations around, you know, there's automation, et cetera, that's leading to changes in vehicle ownership and parking demand. There's also variability within building typology. So affordable housing typically requires less parking than market-rate housing. Office versus industrial, even the difference between neighborhood scale, commercial, and larger commercial, there's different kinds of parking need. And then mixed-use development, you know, housing within a mixed-use development because there's more immediate access to services, parking demand is different for that type of development than it would be for other forms of housing. So this is Darren's part here. I'm going to turn it over to you.
Oh, let's take this. Thanks, Brad. I'm Darren Ranaleddy, and I work at the city of Oakland. I'm a housing policy advisor to Oakland Mayor Libby Schaaf. And we went through in 2016 a comprehensive update to our zoning code, so I'm really happy to be able to share some lessons learned. So here's the first big idea: we're going to propose and recommend that you consider eliminating minimum parking requirements. Now, in our stakeholder interviews, one of the things we heard was, okay, if we eliminate minimum parking requirements, where's all that parking going to go? Is that going to go into our neighborhoods? So the spillover effect and that fear is real. But I think it's important to keep in mind a couple things. Number one, eliminating minimum parking requirements doesn't mean eliminating parking, okay? So what we're saying is rather than prescribe a static parking amount, that parking really needs to be sized for the project. Different projects need different amounts of parking, so the regulations should reflect that. In Oakland, we eliminated minimum parking requirements in downtown Oakland, and you see a whole range of parking in new development, from zero spaces and up until about 1.25 spaces per unit for residential projects, and everything in between. So it depends upon small units, big units, rental units, condo units. So we think that it's the market and the project is in a better position to get the parking right rather than the code. Another thing I wanted to point out is that a good way to test this is to do a pilot. So I know there's a lot of fear around eliminating minimum parking requirements, but try it. Try it in your TOD areas. Collect data, track that, monitor it over time, and adjust as necessary. In Oakland, we're privileged, hang on one second, we're privileged to have eight BART stations, and we've done a number of BART TOD transit villages. And each time we do one, we learn. So if you look at our earliest one, the Fruitvale BART station, was a national model. We would never do it like that again. Low density, overparked, but you know what? We learned, and our latest transit villages are much better. So there's that fear, but you've got to try something because the status quo just isn't working. Then I want to address another fear that we heard, and this came a lot from city staff, which is, okay, well, if we get out of the parking regulation business, then these developers are just going to come in and propose way too much parking, which is not going to be consistent with our goals to reduce project cost and enhance affordability, and it's not going to be consistent with our goals to reduce vehicle miles traveled and greenhouse gas emissions. So a couple things to keep in mind. One is, there's always going to be a natural tendency or incentive to build less parking because building parking is expensive. So there generally isn't a need or a desire to build lots and lots of parking, but if you're concerned about that one tenant or one project that's just going to come in and propose a huge amount of parking, then you could consider a parking maximum, but we really want you to do that thoughtfully and carefully. And it needs to be considerate to market conditions, developer, lender, and tenant concerns, and it should be set relatively higher, and then over time, you could adjust that down. So in downtown Oakland, when we eliminated the parking minimums, we set a pretty high parking maximum of 1.25 spaces per unit. And we talked to the development community, and we said, that's going to be good? You're going to be able to handle that? And everybody said, that's good, we're able to do that. And then over time, as the market adjusts, then that number can come down. We didn't come in with a really aggressive number, because if you come in with a number that's too low, development may not be feasible.
So whenever, in any conversation, mobility and transit and parking are kind of intertwined. And so what we heard from various stakeholders is that, you know, the local transit works for some but not for others. And so what I'm going to talk about here is some short-term and long-term ways to incentivize doing improved transit, to increase other modes of getting through the city. In the short term, just kind of incentivizing other means of mobility, improving bike lane infrastructure, which I know the city's already hard at work at, thinking hard about last-mile approaches in areas around transit. And then we've seen examples of affordable housing developers providing transit vouchers to residents, which is great because it sort of increases ridership on transit systems. Keeping in mind that dense mixed-use development reduces greenhouse gases inherently because you're co-locating, you know, residential and other services. And also, you know, even if the transit isn't great in, you know, in a certain area, doing dense development in proximity transit increases demand on that system, and over time will result in improvements. And there's this kind of chicken-and-egg thing that, you know, is hard, but we believe in wherever you can do dense mixed-use development, it's a good thing. And then we heard about some low-hanging fruit. You know, we know that there's, it's hard to, getting funding for, to improve VTA and transit infrastructure is hard, but there might be some low-hanging fruit that can improve the system. One of the things we heard is just having greater information about bus and train schedules. Maybe even an app would be helpful. And then in the long term, we really think that, you know, hopefully there will be increased revenues, et cetera, that increasing investment in VTA is a good thing.
So we were asked to think about ideas concerning how a parking reform could promote social equity, because it's important to remember that not everyone in the community has the same mobility options or ability to pay if you're going to be pricing parking at different levels. So we would encourage you to think about parking from an equity perspective in two ways. One is from a parking supply perspective. Parking's really expensive to build. Construction costs are very high, and housing is very high in large part because construction costs are very high. If you can reduce those construction costs, you can provide housing at more affordable levels, which will address equity issues. Another thing to think about is parking demand and pricing. So if you're going to be pricing parking either off-street or on-street in a dynamic way based on market demand, then you want to think about how that might disproportionately impact lower-income households or households that have less ability to pay those market prices. So there could be a strategy around income-based subsidies for that type of parking access so that those households still retain the same amount of access. We also encourage you, as you continue to do robust community engagement, we heard loud and clear from the stakeholders that that's absolutely critical. We did this in Oakland. It took two years to update our parking requirements, and it was meeting and meeting and meeting and meeting and lots and lots of challenging conversations, but it's absolutely critical. And I think one thing that's really important is, everybody has an opinion about parking, so it's important that the city really think about what kind of parking data it has, and if it doesn't have the data, to go out and get that data. Because if you want to really provide some convincing public policy proposals, you need two things. You need data, and you need a story. And that needs to be done and communicated in a professional way. And if you don't have those stories, you need to go out and get those stories. So that would mean talking to folks who live without cars, or talking to folks who live in affordable housing, and making sure that when you're engaging with residents, that they understand the breadth of the community that we're talking about here. Another thing to think about is, there might be some creative solutions that are applicable to specific neighborhoods. So if a neighborhood is concerned about potential spillover and that there's a nearby institution, we think institutions could be good partners for shared parking, such as churches, schools, and other institutions.
So I'm going to kind of do a quick summary of what Darren and I were just discussing and break it down into these three buckets. So in the short term, we recommend, in the 12- to 24-month range, to look at piloting the elimination of parking minimums in TOD zones. Establishing reasonable maximums to prevent extreme overparking. To improve alternative means of mobility. To incentivize dense housing, particularly around existing transit. Develop robust communication strategy and engage communities. Creative strategies to eliminate immediate parking concerns, such as the ones Darren was just mentioning. Improve parking and transit information, and then considering the equity impacts associated with parking reform. In the midterm, really collecting data on what's been implemented and seeing how it's working and making adjustments as needed. And then in the long term, you know, we really believe that enhancing the transit services is an important piece of this. So I'm going to turn it over to Wendy.
Thanks. All right. So we talked about this "one size does not fit all," so we want to apply this and take a look at TOD developments, large-scale TOD developments and the opportunities. So important, just to start off, we know this, but all transit areas are not the same. Your downtown is very strong. I moved here 23 years ago. I couldn't have said that 23 years ago, but there's been a lot of work and a lot of hard work, and it's very strong, and it's only going to get stronger. So why is it strong? Because you have a great mix of uses. It's close to multiple transit options, and you have the synergy amongst users. Lawyers want to go to the architects who want to go get a sandwich downtown, who go hop on the train, and that's what a dynamic core TOD area should be. Then you also have the opportunity to have, you have these TODs, and I'm going to use existing loosely because we know that Barriessa is going to be opening up, but you have existing stations or very near stations. And those are areas that are going to be more likely for successful, more likely success for reduced parking options because you have the mix of uses and the planning that's happened nearby those stations. And then we start getting into other categories, like the VTA light rail stops and bus stops, and those are probably a little less ideal for reduced parking because you just don't have the same ridership. So you have to consider what type of parking strategies you're going to be using around those areas. And then there are a lot of areas in San Jose that are minimally served by transit, and those are definitely going to be the most challenging areas for parking reductions. And so that's, this is why one transit center is not equal to all. This is an example. Both, you know, BART stations, very different BART stations. So I'm going to pass it over to you. We're going to toggle back and forth a little bit.
Thanks, Wendy. Dennis Williams with Northmark Capital. We arrange financing on income property, including office, industrial, retail, multifamily, you name it. So the perspective that I've been bringing to the panel is really a focus on viability, economic viability, financial viability of any of the changes that we make. So as we were listening to the various constituents within the city and various departments, there seemed to be, there are different goals. And in some instances, those goals are aligned, and in other cases, they could be in conflict. And a primary goal is to increase commercial development. The city of San Jose has more residents at night than during the day. You're bleeding jobs to other communities, and that's clogging your streets, clogging your freeways, and of course, draining services, and the tax revenue is going elsewhere. So I know that a big priority for the city is to increase commercial activity, specifically office and R&amp;D development. And TOD is a natural place to do that, to ultimately achieve your climate goals. So it seems, on the one hand, those things may be aligned. However, as Wendy pointed out, not all TODs are created equal. And there are many that just aren't ready for office development. There is no office market around those areas, and so simply doing high-density development with low parking in those locations could result in projects that are simply not feasible. So one of the things to think about is maybe rethinking the goal. By virtue of simply developing new office in TOD areas, even if there's excess parking to begin with, if we don't go too tight on the parking right away, we will have accomplished reducing vehicle miles traveled simply by having San Jose residents working in San Jose and no longer driving up to Santa Clara and Palo Alto and Mountain View and other places. So by perhaps not being too aggressive on cutting parking and transorienting developments, making sure that the projects are viable for users, we could still achieve those other goals on reducing vehicle miles traveled and greenhouse gases. So that's one of the concerns about parking maximums, is that imposing those on TODs may seem like it works, but what we, one of our thoughts and recommendations here is that with a large mixed-use project around a transit-oriented development, you could allow for more parking upfront. And then as the location proves to be commercially viable and tenants want to be there, as you add subsequent phases, that's when you can start to squeeze down on the parking. But don't start off doing that, and in the process, end up in situations where your TOD projects are empty, because that's not accomplishing anything. You know, another thing to think about, one of the trends that's been going on in Silicon Valley and Bay Area for some time and across the country and the world is increasing intensity of office use. We've gone from four employees per 1,000 square feet to, in some cases, six employees per 1,000 feet. So on the one hand, you've got this trend of increased density of use, and if we at the same time reduce parking requirements prematurely, we could end up making our projects infeasible, and that's certainly not the goal. You know, flexibility, certainly thinking about ways to feed off of those transit nodes and get people connected to where they live, or shop, or otherwise are spending time. So a mobility option is an example, from downtown San Jose to Durden, as that develops, you know, those are the types of creative things you could do. TDM and TMA measures are certainly important. And another thing, of course, is parking garages no longer have to be so static. There were examples of developers building garages with an idea toward changing the use on the first couple of floors, as an example, to a commercial use and designing them accordingly. So with that, I want to turn it over to, back over to Wendy. Thank you.
So we, when we're talking about this, there's some important, unique considerations. One is that, as well as large, you want to attract your large tenant possibly and your large office space in some of these TODs, but with that will also come some smaller office tenants inevitably to sort of fill the gaps. And oftentimes, smaller office tenants won't be able to afford the same TDM policies that a larger developer might. For example, shuttles, that might be something that a larger developer can take on, but somebody that only has 15, 20, 30,000 square feet of office might not be able to accommodate. It might be, as an alternative, that there could be a TMA for the entire area that all developers could pay into, that then could be, have some creative transportation strategies that could be implemented. Then the neighborhoods serving retail within a TOD, so you always have the restaurants and the shops that obviously are going to be utilized by those people that are in the TOD as well as those without, or outside of it, excuse me. But if the desire is to attract something like a grocery store or a big-box retailer into your TOD, those retailers are going to require standard parking requirements. They're not going to be thinking people are going to be carrying gigantic rolls of toilet paper on BART. So it just depends on the type of retailer that you want, but retailers are very fickle about parking. And so if you want to have successful retail, you want to be able to supply parking standards that will be successful. And then outside of a TOD, we had a lot of meetings with stakeholders, and they're, they feel very isolated, and they also recognize that policy changes can be really, really impactful to their businesses. Very small policy changes on parking could shutter that business because retail's kind of hanging on by a thread right now. So we need to recognize that for those businesses that are not close to transit, we need to be very sensitive when we're reforming parking policies. Just to touch on for-sale in TOD developments, or excuse me, residential in TOD areas, all residential developments are not the same. For-sale properties, somebody might move to a unit if they want to buy it, and they might have initially utilized that transit that's adjacent, but their job may change, and they can't be quite as nimble as somebody that's in a rental unit potentially. So they might end up needing to have a car in order to get to their new employment, area of employment. Rental units, people, I think the market oftentimes dictates, you know, the type of parking needs that are needed for rental units. Generally, people there really want to use the public transit, and they're drawn to those rental units particularly for that reason. And if they do lose a job, they might try to find another rental unit that's closer to their job. So parking maximums, while they're still undesirable, there's a lot of opportunities, like unbundling parking and some reduced parking ratios, that certainly can be considered. And we just wanted to put a little note on here, and I think we'll talk a little more about affordable housing later, but the, affordable housing has its own special considerations. You cannot unbundle parking for affordable housing, for example. There's other things that maybe they, that we need to be very aware of before we change parking policy on just all housing types, that affordable housing is unique. So as far as implementation for our large-scale TODs, there are some short-term things we can do. We can prioritize attracting commercial tenants over reduction of parking. We can identify top TODs that have the best potential to attract development and consider appropriate TDM measures for those early phases of development. And then as we've attracted the commercial tenants, as we continue to phase in larger portions of that commercial development, we need to assess what the parking demand has been for that first phase of development. Maybe there is excess parking, in which case we can adjust parking requirements for future phases accordingly. We can continue to evaluate our TDM measure success and be nimble again, and maybe there's alternative TDM measures that that development or that tenant might be able to implement. And long term, we want to expand and reevaluate the priority TODs as public transit does continue to improve. There's a lot of things that are, you know, in the queue, Caltrain electrification, et cetera, that's going to enable us to continue to evaluate this long term. And we want to substantially reduce the need for parking around occupied TODs. So those surveys and continued reduction of parking as development increases in that TOD is definitely a possibility.
This is, no, it's on. Eric Tao, L37 Partners. I'm a multifamily housing developer, mostly focused in San Francisco. Mary and I both are housing developers, so we're bringing in a little bit of this urgent housing development lens. I know that's not exactly the case here in our exact assignment, but, so we're looking through a housing lens, but we're looking at... through a housing lens, but we're looking at parking, and along the theme of one size does not fit all, we're looking at neighborhood scale development along commercial strips. So, one of the questions was, how do we reduce parking costs? How do we reduce parking without impacting the viability of development, financing, and how to help make affordable housing more viable by reducing parking? We know not one size fits all. We also don't want to cannibalize, we heard loud and clear, commercial retail opportunities in these neighborhood commercial zones, and we, because these commercial zones are so close to bedroom communities, we don't want to, we have to mitigate the impact to those communities. So, we came up with a toolkit to find the right fit and mitigate these concerns, and then we took that toolkit and we applied it to a case study. So, this is kind of the continuum that shows and tries to push and pull. More parking costs more than less parking. Market rate in condo-type projects need more parking. Affordable, as Wendy pointed out, low-income need less parking. We talked to Dan Wu of Charities Housing, and he basically said, the parking requirements of the city right now is the tail wagging the dog, when he should be building more affordable housing, and we need to change that for, because his residents in many of these affordable housing communities do not have cars. With fewer transit options, you need more parking. Proximity to transit and alternate modes, you need less parking. What we heard a lot was public perception about more parking. Public perception is more parking will be more congestion, well, let me just, the public congestion is by having more parking, the cars will stay in the parking lot, and then there'll be less congestion and spillover into their neighborhood, their neighborhood communities. The reality is, when you have less parking, you have less cars. And what we asked, I met with youth commissioners who live in less affluent neighborhoods, and we asked, what is causing all the demand and all the crowding in your streets? And they both said, after some thought, it's really from having overcrowding in their single-family homes, not from development. So, we need to change that public perception. So, some toolkits to allow for mitigation of housing development and still allow parking. We need to allow flexibility to increase parking in the future. What we've done in some projects, we will build parking below the minimum requirement, but allow for scalability by adding either valet, or adding lifts, stackers, that later can add density, if needed. We recommend TDM light. When you have too heavy a TDM burden on a developer, we cannot finance the project. Residential parking programs, everybody likes to talk about it, nobody knows how to enforce it, but it could be something that we put on the table and say, look, if it becomes a problem, and you become underparked, developer, you will commit to trying to participate in a RPP. We like shared parking districts. I talked to another youth commissioner, and he talked about the fact that there are schools and parking lots that could be used and shared. And we also talked to Japantown residents, and they consider diagonal parking as a substitute parallel, to increase naturally density of parking without impacting, but without impacting the built environment. So, let's apply the toolkit. We looked at some of these neighborhood commercial areas, and we think that we can repurpose, use the toolkit and repurpose overparked retail. With one acre of parking, we can build 100 to 200 units of parking, I mean, housing, and I think we only need about 0.8 to 1 ratio, because at night, when the parking lots of these overparked retail empty out, you can have any overflow flowing to that. And during the day, when the parking in the resi is built, you can have the overflow of any retail, if any, needed, can use the retail park, residential parking. And we would like the idea of ground-floor flex space, that will allow for makers, live-work, other type of commercial uses, as well as onsite residents. So, it's a dual purpose. And we hand it over to Mary, she's going to walk us through kind of the application of the toolkit, making it work for a specific site.
Hi, everybody. So, I'm going to, is this on? Hello? Speak.
There you go.
Is it on? No.
They're supposed to be on.
Oh, thank you. Gentleman and a scholar. So, I am an bona fide affordable housing developer with a Girl Scout salute. Have been for 33 years, struggling to climb the hill to get affordable housing built, and as you know, we're all fighting a very difficult losing battle, as rents have climbed enormously, so it's a huge priority. And I can't go out in the world without finding all kinds of land where you might not expect it, but there's so much space around small-scale retail, that where there's parking lots are just going unused. So, we decided to just show you some photographs of a case study, and hopefully, this will help draw the picture. Whoops, no picture yet. This is a little case study about a site that we saw when Ed drove us around on the bus yesterday, Capital McKee, and it's 10 acres of surface parking with a little bit of commercial next to it. So, if you allocated just one of those 10 acres, and you can look at the aerial photograph if you want to count the cars when you get the report, trust me, two-thirds of the spaces are vacant. We could fit 100 to 200 units in there, depending on whether they're large family units or smaller studios, and 100 parking spaces, with the ability to add 50 or 60 more parking spaces, if it was necessary, if the commercial ended up becoming more dense at a later date, by using parking stackers, which are now very viable, feasible option, and workable, commercially reasonable. So, the zoning height limits would need to be established to allow us to have a very tall ground floor, to be able to fit the double-decker parking in, and then we have an alternate use for the retail, that allows retail on either side, or loft-style apartments. But one thing that's really key, especially in East San Jose, it's, the housing is very overcrowded, and this is a situation that occurs all over the Bay Area, because rents are high, salaries are low, and people are renting out spare rooms and garages and so on. And so, what you do is you see a lot of streets where there's cars flowing out into the street from the driveways, there's barely room at the curb to park. We need more housing in these areas, if we can create it. So, what we would do in our affordable housing would be to create a neighborhood preference. We have to do this strictly within fair housing law, which we know how to follow, and it's rigorous but important, and make sure that we can help maximize the number of residents from the local area who move into the housing, so that they're not displaced and can benefit from this. So, let me move ahead and show you a picture. This is the aerial photograph of the site that I'm talking about, and if I could get the little pointer to work, oh, I'm useless with a pointer. Okay, so, you can see it's on the uphill side of the intersection. McKee is going from left to right across the screen, and that is 680, going north-south right there, I believe. And it's the little market there. You can see it easier on the right, it's slightly larger, where it shows the Dollar Tree Store. And the parking, if you measure that parking lot, right next to it, that's 10 acres of land right there, which is a lot of acreage. And all over the city, you can find examples like this. It's not next to transit, but still a very valuable site, and there's tons and tons of land like that, so if we can...
It's directly adjacent to transit, actually.
Oh, I beg your pardon. I meant heavy rail. Sorry, I always think, I'm a BART writer, what can I tell you? And you've got a lot of BART coming down here, which is terrific. So, what, as Eric explained, we'd be sharing parking with the commercial. Here's the idea of the lower, higher ground floor to allow for stacking, parking if necessary, and you could put retail in something like with the yellow spaces, or you can create live-work lofts, or artist lofts, or just plain old housing units in those spaces as well. So, it gives you a lot of flexibility for what you build there. And our goal is that we can help preserve neighborhoods by building on surface lots and intensifying what's in the neighborhoods, without reducing and hopefully saving some of the community-based retail, which we know is very stressed now, because we all hate to go out after a long day, so if you use Amazon, that just erodes your local businesses, it's a very difficult situation for everybody. And it increases the viability and the use of future mass transit by adding more residents, and alternate modes of transit by creating a critical mass of users. So, and provides, as I mentioned three times already, additional opportunities for housing, which God knows we need. Last building I've occupied, we had 1,200 applicants within 10 days for 100 units. And I know you have the exact situation here, too. So, the city, city has done a ton of important work. I'd like to thank you, I think we forgot to do that at the beginning. The staff put together a ton of work to put a huge briefing book, it's packed with all kinds of information and wonderful relevant studies for us. You've also, I know that the city council has approved putting a measure, which is going to be on the March ballot for a transfer tax, which is vitally important to help subsidize affordable housing, which is very expensive to build, but because we charge low rents, we need money to make up the gap to build the building. And hopefully, that will sail through in the election, fingers crossed, but we're very excited about that, and the city's very forward-thinking to have done that. And I gather that the council's also considering a commercial linkage fee in the future, all of which is great. So, the city planning department and council have also proved your urban growth areas, which you can see on this map, but I just wanted to highlight the fact that it's terrific that all the zoning work has been done in those purple areas, but there are so many other areas in the city that also have this underutilized retail. So, the next time you drive into a Target market somewhere, just look around, the sea of parking, which they call fried egg development. You know, the yoke is the building, and then the white is the rest of it, it's empty. Could have tons of housing in there. They'd sell more widgets in the Target market. So, I think I've gone on long enough, probably overstayed my welcome. Here's the, here's the timing, or some of the timing possibilities about expanding some of the rezoning opportunities in the city beyond what you've already done in urban villages, to include ground-floor flex space, and give us the opportunity to scale parking over time, and then incorporate neighborhood preference, and help with that overcrowding situation, create shared parking and parking districts. I'm looking at you, Shiloh, and I forgot to mention that 17 feet, we could also fit in some good bike storage, got to have that, and then continue with data collection of the commercial parking utilization, so you can tweak it over time. And then, long-term, we are going to be integrating into your urban village vision, I hope. So, back to you, sir.
Thank you, Mary.
I took your five or your six minutes.
I'm just going to quickly kind of summarize. So, everything you see now is essentially been said by each of the panelists. I'm not going to read through them all, but essentially, we have these short-term goals, and we talk about it from each perspective, large-scale, neighborhood scale, in the 12 to 24-month period. In the midterm, we have just-right parking, large-scale, neighborhood scale. And in the long-term, just-right, large-scale, and neighborhood scale. These are just a sample of some of the things that exist in your community. When we think about San Jose, usually we see one project, one area, one neighborhood. To try to address this question in the broadest sense in your community is very, very challenging, but we think that this is a beginning point. By no means is this all, there's a lot of work to do, there's a lot of different places that you have to deal with. You have an extremely diverse community by virtue of ethnicity, geography, types of use, typology, and a series of things that when you look at it, you really have to drill down and understand who you're affecting as you go forward, and what you're affecting in the built environment. So, with that, I'd like to thank you all, and, let's see, that's it. We have a few minutes for questions. Madam Chair, I don't know how much time you wanted to give us, but we're available to answer whatever we can.
Sorry, we were just mumbling, asking ourselves if we should open it up to public comment first, and I think we thought that would be a good idea, so, wanted to go ahead and give anyone from the public an opportunity to come up and ask a question or state an opinion, two minutes or less. Thanks.
Good afternoon. You'll have to help me with the two-minute part. So, I'm Ron Goleman, I'm BT's Director of Real Estate and Transit Oriented Development. I want to commend the panel for the great job here, and appreciate the invitations, and our staff had a chance to talk with you. Just a couple of key things to start with. The transit app does have BT's transit system on there, it's very convenient. GoBass does a good job of that as well. On December 28th, we rolled out our next network. And to try to summarize that, what we've done is, we've actually shifted a lot of bus service out of the lower-frequency routes, lower ridership routes, and focused on corridors that have you ridership. And so, it's very much an effort to basically put more bus service in the places where people want to ride buses. So, that's a major transit change that we've now implemented. Based on the experience of other places, we're counting on a pretty significant bump in ridership. And, you know, I just want to say that if you look at the map, you'll see that that change has very much favored San Jose in terms of where the increase in services is located. Beyond that, and I think the fact this is kind of great work that's here, and I think you've covered all the things that we're thinking about, I think that one of the words that jumped out at me in here was I saw fear a couple of times. And I think a lot of times, the challenge in front of us is fear. The focus on preventing bad outcomes, and that we only have one shot at it, and how that gets in the way of thinking about, how do we create a better outcome? And how do we think about the best ways to do things? And it's related to the idea about flexibility, and we need to kind of get in the cycle of thinking about, let's try things, let's fix them if they don't work, let's adapt them, let's evolve them, and I think that gets back to data and output. So, I think what I see here, a lot of great tools, a lot of great answers for discussion, and ultimately comes back to all of us about how do we take these ideas and think about a process that can really think about, how do we manage the very legitimate concerns that people have, but creates a discussion and dynamic work in advance, I think a lot of great ideas here, and take us to the place that I think we all generally agree we want to be in terms of the future with less driving, less cars, less parking, more sustainability. So, again, thank you for your very good work.
Hello, my, hello, my name is Alex Shore. I'm the Executive Director of Catalyzed SV. Want to thank Eric and Wendy in particular for allowing us a chance to chat with you all yesterday. Something that we didn't have a chance to talk about yesterday, and maybe didn't come up tonight, and I think is an important point for you all to be talking about as a city and as ULI, is that there are a lot of externalities, a lot of costs affiliated with cars and parking, that come from congestion. All the economic efficiency and productivity we lose from having people stuck in traffic, and that is a very real cost for our overarching society as well. And the more we can get people out of automobiles, the less likely we will to have those externalities, those additional costs. We, at Catalyzed SV, a lot of our members are really interested in creating communities where there is more homes for everyone, and less parking to create that congestion. In essence, cars are creating, for many of us, the very problems that are making our lives more difficult. The air that we breathe, the time we spend with our families, the amount of money we spend parking and paying for our vehicles. Professor Gabby from Santa Clara University finds that renters spend 17% of their income on parking every month, I'm sorry, 17% of their, the rent that they pay goes to parking every month. So, that is a very real cost for low-income families when they're trying to rent, and those are costs that we need to be keeping in mind. If there are going to be changes in our transportation system, we think that they're going to be transformational, and that's the change that we need. We think that younger folks, as you presented, are using cars at a much lower level, and that is what we need to solve the climate crisis. So, every policy that you create that accounts for and accommodates for cars and parking is a policy that doesn't account for and accommodate the future that we need in this city.
Thank you, Elena, for taking time. Does anyone else want to offer some comments?
Scott Neese, Executive Director of San Jose Downtown Association. I'd like to thank ULI for their measured and pragmatic presentation here. A couple of things really, really struck me about, we don't want to build empty buildings. That's not going to help anybody. So, rolling out kind of where we want to be with subjugating the automobile with no parking to where we are today, and how long it is going to be before we have the transit, particularly in the downtown, to allow us to get there. I thought you gave us some really excellent breadcrumbs to follow, to do it in a way that we can really have our cake and eat it too, and walk along this path to reducing our greenhouse gases and everything that Alex talked about without, because it's fragile. And if we don't get the zoning, if we don't get the alchemy right, then we won't have the people there that are going to make the downtown happy. So, thank you for your recommendation.
All right, then, I'm going to go ahead and close the public hearing, and open... But in our defense, we're going straight to the planning commission meeting after this for a long night, so please forgive us for eating in front of you, and thank you to the staff for accommodating us. So, to my fellow commissioners, any questions?
So, thank you for the presentation. It was really interesting, a lot of the things that I've been thinking about, both from a development perspective and from my own personal perspective of how do I get my family out of a car when I'm only two miles from work and only two miles from my kid's daycare, but I'm finding it very challenging. So are there any strategies that were considered for that last mile of getting people from the transportation to where they need to go, particularly in San Jose? Because it seems like so much of the city is really not that accessible to transit, and that the strategies that we're talking about here are really for new development. But what do we do for the existing residents and how do we get people out of their cars?
Darren, Brad, you guys want to take a shot at this one?
Yeah, I mean, one of the challenges of doing this in two days is we, that's a topic we'd love to dive more into, and I'm afraid we probably don't have as nuanced of an answer as you're looking for. But, you know, one thing I guess I can offer as a biker that lived in San Francisco for a long time is that this seems like, you know, it's pretty flat and it seems like a great place to be a bike rider. And, you know, to the extent that road diets are, you know, I know that's a controversial topic, but making it safer and encouraging and advocating for greater pedestrian and bikability would go a long way.
Anybody else like, Dennis?
Yeah, there's a discussion about running a transit shuttle.
Sure, go for it, Mary.
Oh, this doesn't...
Your aunt is going to lead you into that. You talked about Emeryville.
Yeah, we just finished creating a building in Emeryville right on the border of Oakland, and there's a lot of transit there, which is terrific. But you have the potential of a huge amount of traffic, of transit. Deirdre's going to be the biggest station in the state, if not, or the second biggest for train throughput. And with, once BART gets there, it's phenomenal, very, very powerful. But it's not easy walking distance from downtown. So being able to have protected bike paths for access is great, but not everybody can ride a bike or has a bike or wants to ride one in the rain. And so I was thinking that copying the model that Emeryville has, which is inconveniently located transit, they have the MacArthur BART far away from their downtown, and they have Amtrak also far away from their retail, and everything is sort of spread out. So they just decided to create a shuttle bus that's just going around and around, and it works very well. It doesn't solve your last-mile problem, though, and as a former working mother myself, they're gone now at this point, self-sufficient. But nevertheless, it really is extremely difficult to do that without the car. So I think we just should give you a papal dispensation if you have small children. Don't you think?
What else?
Mariel Caballero. So as someone who actually just recently got rid of my car, this is really exciting. I'm two and a half weeks into this new transit sort of lifestyle, and I use the transit app every single day, multiple times a day. So thank you for that pitch so that folks know that it's there and it's very useful, real-time transit data. I'm excited about a future with less cars. Previous to living in Japan Town, I lived in East San Jose where my neighbors literally had 17 people living in a three-bedroom, two-bathroom house. And so parking in East San Jose is a huge issue for our residents and for our community and for our quality of life. And any place where we can really repurpose empty parking lots or new land is something that I'm excited about. I don't know how well the residents will actually take to that idea, because it's really different and it looks really different from what they're used to. You know, we go from single-family homes to sort of more dense housing, and it's a move we need to make. And so that's why I think the communication strategy is going to be so important, and getting out there and talking to our neighbors about why we need this density out there is going to be a huge part of it. And so I hope that as the city and us as commissioners continue to hear about this and that we're also taking the opportunity to educate our neighbors and our friends about why we need this, because it's inhumane to have 17 people living in a home. I also work in the justice system, and we often put people on electronic monitoring, and then those people get in trouble because they can't, they don't stay in their homes. Well, if you're a teenager living in a house with 17 people, are you really going to want to be in your house, you know, for 10 hours after you get out of school? Absolutely not. It's not fair, and it is a social equity issue. And it's something that actually ends up criminalizing people even more because our housing problems are creating more stress on those families. And so I'm just really all for everything we can do to create more parking, no, I'm sorry, the reverse. More housing and less parking. So thank you for this presentation.
We do a lot of after-school tutoring in our buildings, and it's just such a pleasure to be able to help families. We've got so many people who are the first and their family go to college, and it's all completely free, summer school, everything. But we know so many people who've moved in from overcrowded housing, and the kids can't do any homework, there isn't even a table where there's any room to do any homework, it's so quiet, it's very, very difficult. So hear what you're saying.
Huge. I'm putting myself in the queue. So I'm not exactly sure how to ask this question. I guess just taking a step back from just a high-level, bigger-picture, philosophical opinion on how we should be approaching this. You know, listening to the presentation, I feel, you know, first of all, thank you for doing that, and also I felt a little bit like I was listening to NPR where they can talk about really dire news stories, but it doesn't sound dire because everybody's talking very calmly and very, you know, rationally. And, you know, in my opinion, if we don't get folks out of cars, you know, the world is ending. And so there is a crisis, and we know that parking contributes to that because we allow people to continue to drive. And so I'm leading the witness here, but I guess what I'd like to hear from you all is, I heard, I heard kind of a, what I took was more of an incrementalist approach. It's like, oh, the lending community isn't ready, oh, the people aren't ready, so we have to, we have to kind of inch our way towards this, as opposed to, you know what, we're going to have to make some hard decisions here that are going to force the behavior change that we know we need to force. And so I'm wondering, maybe you each can go down the line and say, where are you at? Like, do we really need to make those hard decisions and do so now through some potentially, you know, uncomfortable things? Or are you on the side of, ah, we got to go a little more slowly? And I kind of, you know, you might, you might make yourself look bad if you answer a certain good way, based on how I frame things.
If I could take a stab first, and then I'm going to throw it to Darren next, because he's had some real-life experience in the city of Oakland. I think the challenge you have is you've got to take everybody along on the bus with you. If you get on the bus and decide to get on it and go, and you leave everybody at the curb, you've made a huge mistake. So that doesn't happen overnight. I mean, there's a huge communication strategy that you as a community, the staff, the commissioners, the council members, have to think about how they're going to roll this out, talk about it, and move down the path. The second thing is you have to frame that message, you have to tell the story, you have to tell it in an understandable way. If you have 40 dialects or 40 ethnicities, you have people from all kinds of walks of life, this has to be broken down in pieces so everybody at every bit of the spectrum understands what you're trying to say. The last thing I would say, just in generality, is you got to have the data. The detailed data is what sells the argument. So if you go present something, we're developers, we go present to capital all the time. If we don't have the data, they close the door, throw us out pretty damn fast. We have not seen the hard data in a lot of cases to support the argument. When I mean hard data, in the city of San Jose, not anecdotal data from other places. You have to do the studies. There's a couple of studies that we found, and we're going to cite them in our report specifically. One was done recently in Palo Alto, and the other was done about 2010, conjunct with the VTA, primarily between here and Palo Alto on various apartment projects. And it gives you a show how to do this type of stuff. So I think you got to tee it up. With that, I'm going to stop talking, and maybe Darren, you can add a little bit to this discussion. You guys, I know, have had this discussion.
Yeah, I don't think there's a secret answer. You heard incrementalism. I would say that, for me, the message is do something. We can't afford to continue the status quo because, you're right, we are suffering from a housing and homeless and climate crisis that is, people are literally dying on the streets and our planet is dying. So I think the takeaway is we need to do something, and whether it's bold and quick or slow and incremental might depend on what we're talking about and how the market might react to that. When I think about the transit villages in Oakland and the example that I gave at the Fruitvale BART station, that was in 2000, I think. Very low-density, lots of parking. We just approved last year a high-rise at West Oakland for about 1,000 units with 50 parking spaces. So that's 20 years. So yes, 20 years is a long time, but when you think about our current parking land-use development paradigm, which is really a post-World War II, it took 50 years, right? And now we've got 20 years. So I think that we're at a tipping point and we're starting to accelerate in the right direction. So I think things will continue to speed up.
I'd like to comment as well, because I think it was probably my presentation that sounded as incrementalist as anybody's. And, but there's a reason for it, and that is, my big concern and our big concern is that if you impose very low to no parking requirements on transit-oriented developments and you build it and they don't come, and by that I mean specifically the office and R&amp;D tenants, and they go elsewhere, they're nowhere near transit. Whereas if you can get them there near transit and then start to figure out what's working along lines of what Darren was saying, let's get them close to transit first. So let's not impose such difficult parking requirements that they don't ever go there. That's the concern. And I think the biggest challenge for a city is how do you, how do you make change when the neighboring cities aren't on board? And so as an example, if you under-park, say, Bariessa was one that we talked about, right? You under-park Bariessa, that's a BART station, a transit node, and the office tenant doesn't come, and they go to a freeway-oriented development, let's say that's in Lopetus or Santa Clara or somewhere else, then what we've done is missed an opportunity to put office near transit and get people to start thinking differently. I think that's more our message, is let's be really thoughtful. If we're going to put parking in, we ultimately want it to be really under-parked relative to the way people think about parking today. But if you under-park it from the start, then, and the tenant says, that just doesn't work for me, employees can't get there, they don't live near a BART station, they're coming from all sorts of different places. Our view is that people will reorient their behavior. People certainly don't in San Francisco. You compare how people got to Candlestick Park compared to how they get to AT&T. It's very different. And initially, the giants, when they were figuring that out, over-parked it to make sure that people got accustomed to it, and then people figured it out. And there were much less vehicle miles traveled to get to a ballgame today. We're the same thing. So all we're saying is being thoughtful about that, because as a city, you're really, the challenge is your neighbors, and whether they're on board with you or not. And I think that's something to just keep in mind.
I'd like to add something also, which is, something we talked about is the regional versus city perspective. And, you know, there's this site that Eric and Mary took a look at, at Capital in McKee, which I think we heard kind of some concerns about, you know, there's, it's not that close to downtown, it's not very, there is a transit stop there, but not a lot, it's not maybe well-used, I'm not sure. But, you know, and so if you build housing there, then most likely people are going to wind up driving, and so it's not as good of a place to build housing as maybe somewhere that's closer to, you know, to more, to BART or, you know, some more well-used transit. On the other hand, you know, if that prevents a family from getting displaced to Stockton and driving, you know, an hour or whatever to work every day, it is actually still reducing greenhouse gases overall. So it's just, you know, that regional versus local perspective is, I think, something to keep in mind. But I do agree with you, and I think that there, because I think there's kind of an inertia around parking, and there's this, you know, ingrained idea that parking is this kind of free resource, and that's something that really has to change. And when you, you know, if you look at like the Transform website, as we did, we saw that, I think for overall in multifamily housing in San Jose, there's something like a 75% utilization of parking in residential, existing residential housing. And then if you look at affordable, it's like half that. So there's only, I think, 50% utilization of parking. And even so, if you, you know, most likely, this is speculation, but if you went and talked to, you know, to residents, there's some percentage of that, I guess is what I'm saying, even that 50% that's using the parking that, you know, if the parking wasn't free, you know, would look for other ways of getting around. And so I think that, you know, we are up against that and we have to push against it.
And then I just have one little question. I think it was you who talked about, one of you that talked about piloting TOD, parking standards in TOD, and I'm just wondering what that looks like, given the time horizon of, you know, you build something, you have to wait for it to, I think of a pilot as being something that you get, you get quick results on, and so what does that actually look like, piloting something in a building where if you find it didn't work, you can't necessarily retrofit it?
I think we are recommending pilot because sometimes public policy changes are scary to folks. And so just say, hey, it's a pilot. We're just testing it. That's how you get around that. It's just, it's just this area, and we're studying. If it doesn't work, then we'll do something different. So I think that's the idea. I mean, what does that actually mean? Do you change, you know, section 17.63 or chapter 18.96? I mean, we didn't get into that. But I mean, the idea is that I think the public is, can be more comfortable with something if they know that it is being tested. So the key thing is to establish what your criteria that you're going to use are ahead of time to evaluate whether it works or not, set those up, and then, you know, yeah, I agree, two, three years, that sounds like a long time, but, I mean, that's going to be over like that. And to look back and say, huh, I wish we had piloted that two or three years ago, you know, just, you know, go for it.
Also, I just wanted to add, one thing we touched upon was the neighborhood outreach and an outreach program. But one thing we were talking about was commercials upfront, you know, if you don't get that resistance because you actually have built something that is successful and not spilling over into the neighborhood, and then if there's any available parking that remains at the future phases, because you're not, 3 million square feet isn't going to fall out of the sky. So it's going to be built over time, it's going to be a multi-year project, that you can actually start implementing new strategies along the way. And if you can get the neighborhood to buy in from the onset, it's going to be a lot easier as you're trying to reduce and reduce and reduce versus starting right upfront, people seeing the consequences of people spilling out into their neighborhood potentially, and then having the neighborhood opposition as future phases develop.
She has a comment, do you have a question?
I have a comment and a question.
Do you have a comment and a question, or just a comment?
I'm happy to answer.
Hey, I'm calling on Commissioner Yezne, she who has a comment and a question.
I'm not used to being grilled by the chair. I wasn't prepared. I was extremely encouraged by the idea of incrementalism and incentivism being approached at the development approval level. As a planning commission, we don't get to say, well, let's test this for a couple of years, and then you come back and we'll evaluate it, and you do it work or it doesn't work. That's just not the way development is approved in most cities, actually. Probably not even in Oakland, but in fact, that's what happens in a lot of cases. I'm wondering if anyone has done any research or experimenting with incorporating those ideas into zoning, for example. We have to live in a regulation-based world. Most cities in California do, not that that's the best approach. But at the same time, what you were describing within a single development where you could structure it so that we start with a certain parking ratio...
I was extremely encouraged by the idea of incrementalism and incentivism being approached at the development approval level. As a planning commission, we don't get to say, well, let's test this for a couple of years and then you come back and we'll evaluate it and either it works or it doesn't work. That's just not the way development is approved in most cities, actually, probably not even in Oakland. But in fact, that's what happens in a lot of cases. I'm wondering if anyone has done any research or experimenting with incorporating those ideas into zoning, for example. We have to live in a regulation-based world. Most cities in California do, not that that's the best approach, but at the same time, what you were describing within a single development where you could structure it so that we start with a certain parking ratio and if it turns out you don't need that much parking, the second phase of development could be 50% more square footage than was in the original entitlement. You could increase the height, you could increase the ground coverage based on how the development behaves over time. And to some extent, we've seen this in areas like North San Jose where you have a lot of industrial development and a lot of it was really overparked. On the other hand, there was no transit close by in the beginning, so you needed the parking. And at this point, as we're going forward, that can change. But how do you plan for that in advance in a way that we can all live with since you have to not only include the expectations in the initial approval, you need performance standards and some means of perhaps encouraging behavior over time in ways that works to everyone's advantage?
I think we give that a shot. That's a really good point. I think you could probably ask the staff for options on what to do. I don't know what your regulatory regime is like if you do DAs and DDAs and PUDs and PBDs and all those things. And so, I don't wanna walk you down the wrong path, but I think the concept there can work. I worked on a project where we did have a two-phase project and there was lots of concern about spill-over traffic, cut-through traffic in adjacent neighborhood. And so, we said, you know, after phase one, study that and if the results are X, then you have to do Y, and if they're Z, then you do ZZ. So, that's kind of a simple example. I think you could probably ask the staff for other ways that we could have checked-in milestones along the implementation of these development plans such that we can learn from and then adjust as time goes on.
We actually had a project go through in the last year, affordable housing. It had come to us some time before and the neighborhood was just incensed and frightened. So, the developer who included an affordable housing operator went away and spent a year or two working with the neighborhood. The project that came back was better in almost every respect, but it actually was much smaller and they were building one-story units that, over time, if everything proved to work out, would become two-story. The structures, it was, I don't know if it would ever really work, but anyway, that was the idea. And it was a good one. The neighborhood was crazy about the project at that point. It included a new library and a community garden, among other things, amenities that were very important to the neighborhood. And I wonder if anyone has seen that sort of thing actually happen. Obviously, there had to be some sort of financial underpinning, but if that is a common form or is that something that's fairly new on the ground?
No, it's definitely not. We're in the process of building a second phase in two sites in the Central Valley where the council wanted to, the council acquired all the land at the front end and sold it to us in phases in both cases and we've, you know, we're financing them separately. But the experience of the community changing its mind about what we do, we see that all the time. And I can't tell you how many people I meet who tell me there's no housing, affordable housing in this city and I say, well, what's your address? And it turns out they've been living next to something that we built for 25 years and they don't have a clue that it's even affordable. So, the reaction, almost uniformly seems to be, people are so afraid of it to start with and then, you know, once it's on the ground and it's very well-managed and it looks great, they're all like, gee, we just love it. So, the phasing idea is definitely one that makes a lot of sense. But building something over a one-story building isn't something you wanna do, you wanna build that and then build three stories next to it because otherwise you have to virtually tear down the first part to build the second.
So, I'm gonna, we have five minutes before we're gonna be starting planning commission and I wanna get to Commissioner Allen's comment.
Real quickly, do you do development agreements in the community? That's a good tool to use for those exact circumstances. Four acres next to the Lafayette BART station and we developed over time retail apartments, condominiums. The original use for the condominiums was an office building, it made no sense, but that's what the city wanted at the time. We had a building mechanism that if we went through a process, we could change the use. So, there's a lot of ways you can do that. And we have a large landowner potentially in one of these large sites, one landowner for multiple uses. That's a very easy way to accomplish some of those goals and objectives.
Okay, a couple of quick comments and then a quick question. Just unfortunately, the project, one of the issues we're dealing with here is time and financing and ironically, the project that Commissioner Yezney references actually fell apart due to financing once it finally got entitled because it took many years to get the, because we, the city felt that we needed to have the community on board, even though at the end of the day, they don't vote on projects. They vote on their council members, they vote on the people who appoint us, right? So, at the end of the day, we could just go ahead and do it, but because of the community resistance, we didn't. And that was an affordable, not just an affordable housing project, it's supportive housing for folks who are chronically homeless and could have served a lot of them. But now, it's not gonna happen at all because it took too long to pass it because the community was resistant for irrational reasons. I do also wanna hopefully comfort everyone by letting you know that the planet is not dying. Our planet is gonna be just fine once we're gone. This is an incredibly resilient planet and it will survive humanity if we kill ourselves off. I still think there's a chance to save us, right? And that's really why we're here. I wouldn't serve in this commission if I thought we were rearranging the deck chairs in the Titanic. But some days, it does feel that way. So, I do wanna remind folks that the planet's gonna be fine, humans are the ones that have to change, right? So, I think, I do think the climate crisis, to your point about incrementalism, Chair Ballard, is getting more pronounced. And I do think that as the fires start to come to our backyards, as people are now living in our backyards and in our creek beds and our underpasses and everywhere, you can't go without seeing folks out there suffering, as we have more floods and we have more hurricanes and droughts, it's gonna impact everyone and people will begin to, be forced to make a change because they're gonna have beachfront property and I'll do so, right? So, I'm not worried about that. I do have one quick question and it regards the, it's the last mile or the last half-mile, whatever you wanna call it. To me, and this is someone who just the other night walked from, you know, San Pedro Square Market to a Sharks game, right, which is pretty much walking from downtown to Deirdre Don. It's a 10-minute walk. I don't understand how, is there any data, maybe from California Walks or another group, about that number, about, you know, the different generations and their use of a car, right? Is there any sort of data on what's too far for someone to walk? Like, for me, I'm an able-bodied person, right? So, a mile really is not that big a deal, it's 15 minutes walking slowly, right? However, for someone else with limited mobility, that is, that is a problem, right? So, is there any data that can help inform cities as to whether increasing opportunities for walking and, you know, walking, moving through our areas as just pedestrians could improve the situation? Is there any, do you have any data or any knowledge about studies that have explored that option as we consider mobility options? I love bikes, but walking works just fine, too, it's the oldest form.
I don't know the answer to that, but one thing, it probably depends on the 10-minute walk. You know, if it's along the waterfront or, as an example, it's great. If it's under overpasses, it's probably not. And that probably has a lot to do with, you know, the experience of how you get people from one place to the other.
That's what I'm getting at, too, is that as a former arts commissioner, we've done a lot to try to improve the conditions of how, you know, what it looks like moving around downtown. So, I think that that's also something to be considered, is the space, too, and the, and, you know, what it feels like, how, the aesthetics are important in terms of drawing people to do things, right?
I think there's data out there around walking sheds to transit stations, community walking. So, I think there's probably things out there that the staff could inform you about. I would also say that there's something about the goal of reduced trips and how you can achieve that through infill. So, as there are more homes and more shopping opportunities and more businesses within the community, then your trips become shorter because there are just more opportunities for those things. So, then that last mile issue becomes less and less because trips get shorter and shorter.
For, I just, last thing, for our downtown, the Deirdre Don issue, I think over time is our Google overlords come to town and, and BART comes to, I'm totally joking, and BART comes to Deirdre Don, I think you're just gonna see naturally more opportunity and less need for people necessarily to walk all the way to Deirdre Don from downtown, anyway. Thank you, and thank you very much for the report and for being here.
So, we are essentially at time. Is there anything else that we need to say or do or cover? Otherwise, thank you all for doing this, thank you to staff for setting this up. Join us in the next room for a planning commission hearing, it should be very exciting.